Okay, it's five o'clock. And the board chair, Carolyn Bradford. Vice Chair Johnny Warren. Board member Daniel Case. Board member Jennifer Hartline. Board member Dr. Jane Griffin. And Superintendent Josh Engel.
Here.
Please do remember to you there. I have a question.
Sure.
That's correct. And Father, we love you and thank you again for the privilege of being here for each one in attendance. Thank you for this beautiful day. And Father, as we go in their meeting tonight, we always ask you for wisdom and guidance. And I pray that you'd offer that to us tonight. I pray, Father, now that everything that takes place here would be honor and glory in your eyes. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. Attention. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular scheduled four meeting minutes for March the 28th, 2022? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Do I call the favor? That's everyone. Next is Superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. First item tonight on the under the Superintendent's report, we'll hear from a few of our directors. So first up would be John Smith, Director of Transportation and Facilities.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I, you have some things before you that I've sat down. It's a, I just want to give you just a little, few minutes of not, I'll do the brief as I can. A overview of our transportation for this year. The exciting and always challenging world of transportation. Just a little things FYI for you about our transportation department that you may or may not be aware of. On the first slide there, we currently have 20 established routes in our system right now. Three of these are special ed routes. Now, right now, we're not running 20 routes because of the shortage of drivers. We had to double up some route. So currently, we are operating 18-day routes. That's the differential you see there due to our driver shortage, which is being experienced by virtually every system in the state and almost the nation. Driver shortages are happening everywhere. Our staff is made up right now. We have 13 full-time drivers, five part-time drivers, and we wouldn't have been able to function, I don't know how we would have been able to without these part-time drivers that have helped us to be able to make it through this. And three full-time special ed aides. We have one full-time mechanic and one, his name is Levi, and one full-time shop assistant named David that they're. This year, so you get an idea of how many miles we travel, I just gave you a number there. We have through, from August through April, we have traveled, driven approximately 231,622 miles with our transportation vehicles. Now, I broke it down a little further for you so you get an idea of the makeup of these, of these miles. The vast majority, obviously, are on daily bus routes. Every day, we do 12, we cover 1,200 miles with our daily bus routes every single day. That's morning, that's morning and afternoon combined. In addition to that, we do have a substantial number of field trips and athletic trips that we travel on. And so far this year, we've really closed to 30,000 miles on field trips and sporting events. 7,500 in county cars and 5,500 in our county maintenance vehicles that are used to go to all the schools every single day, doing all the maintenance work. And the maintenance vehicles are included in our transportation vehicles. The best thing about this is that last, last bullet point there. This is our third year that we have been accident-free. That's, that to me is just one of the best things. I have to commend our drivers. Our drivers are just diligent, they're focused and dedicated, and they're just fantastic. And I want to commend them as highly as I can because I don't know before then if we ever had a year that we didn't have an accident. So we've had three in a row, we're very proud of that, and I commend those drivers on it. On the next slide, I've kind of broken down so you get an idea of our fleet of buses that we currently have. The highlighted ones are the ones that are driven every single day on, on daily routes. Now, out of those, we currently have three of our buses that are in, in the shop doing, having, I mean, major, we've had some major breakdowns this year. We probably had more breakdowns. And they're all in our, on our newer buses, so they're under warranty, which is a blessing. But three of them are in, in the shops, one's in Atlanta, one's in Cartersville. And so, and one's in over there on the lot, the guy from the tech, from the factory came today, that we're having to get, one's going to have a motor replaced, one's transmission's having to be replaced, and the other a major part on it. But this is the breakdown of our buses. But I just wanted you to see on the bottom there, the, this is our fleet and the age of our fleet. And I do think it's, I want to commend the board because the board approved the purchase, starting four or five years ago, of updating our fleet. And I want you to see the substantial difference that has made. 61% of our fleet is five years old or less. That's commendable. There's not very many systems that can say that, and, and we do. So that has really helped. And the newer the buses, what that means is the safer the buses, the more economical the buses, they're, they're just, and usually, it means they go along without breaking down. But that's not been the case this year. But anyway, that's, that's just an overview of our current vehicles and transportation. On the next slide, I've given you the average ridership for our buses this year. And with all the COVID and everything, it just kind of, it gives you an idea of how we've, how we've gone, starting, and I started in, of May of last year. And that was, you know, COVID was hot and heavy that, then. But you see how it's kind of gone up and down, and there's really no way to chart. But the further we get into the year and the more the COVID has subsided, you see the numbers have gone up. And in April this month, so far, we're averaging about the same as March, but we've had increases most months. But when you, when you clear the perspective, I hope that it kind of stands out that almost one-third of our students, we have a student population, I believe, just over 2,000 students, and almost one-third of them are riding buses. So you see how vital the buses are to our school system and how, how many of our students take it, and parents take advantage of that and the benefit that the transportation department is giving to our school system. So there is a substantial number of our students that are riding on buses every single day. And I just hope that is of interest to you. On the next sheet, I wanted to give you just a breakdown of our fuel. And fuel, obviously, is a hot-button topic, as you know, because of the volatility of the fuel market. But you see how the costs this year certainly are going to be probably higher than they've ever been, certainly a long time probably ever, because you see how the price of fuel has gone up, our prices. And I've just broken it down into every single month, so you kind of get an idea of how, how much we're using, when we're using it, and how much it's costing, the fluctuation in prices and the cost. And right now, we have so far, we're right at close to $100,000 in expenditure for fuel this year. With the substantial increase in prices, you can see that it's made a huge difference. And so, all the way on the bottom, you'll see that I've given you just a monthly average. This is the average right now, when you take the whole year into perspective, of the gallons of diesel, the gallons of unleaded that our vehicles are using. And one thing, I don't have the numbers from pre-featured, but this is because so many of our buses are newer, they're more, much more economical. And it's really paying off. I mean, typically, in years past, 4,000 gallons a month was a good average, if we could keep it at 4,000 gallons. And with the older buses, the bigger buses, bigger motors, they're just much less economical. So we are really, excuse me, recognizing the substantial, I think, savings that is paying off from the new buses that we purchased. I also included, so she's, just to give you our new fuel system that was put in last year. You see the ability it gives us, the reports that it generates, monthly reports, and you can get just an idea of each month. We can tell how many gallons have been used in each one. And some months, obviously, are a little higher than others. Typically, like you'll see on March, March had a much higher usage, especially with diesel. And the reason is, is because we have probably the most field trips and athletic trips in March of the whole year. Because you have soccer, baseball, tennis, golf, all going on in that month, middle school and high school. So you have a lot, a lot of trips. So that just hopefully makes it just a little bit clearer of the, of the way the fuel works and how many, how much we're using and where it's going, that kind of thing. On the next slide, I just gave you an idea. Last year, we recommended to the board and asked you to, if we could purchase some new buses, but two of them, we wanted to purchase as smaller buses, half buses, 42-passenger buses, as compared to the 72-passenger, which is a full size. And at that time, the reason, two reasons. One, the primary reason was so that we could save on especially trips, field trips. We were having, all we had was bigger buses, and all the trips, a lot of trips will only have 15, 20 kids on them, and we're taking them down to Rome, we're going to Atlanta. You know, this, this weekend, we're going to take another one to Atlanta. And the smaller buses are two things. Number one, they're so much easier to drive on the freeway when you're getting in, especially going to Atlanta, going anywhere, they're much easier and safer to drive. And secondly, they're much more economical on fuel. So we have been able to take those, and if you see, under that first bullet point, also, we wanted to establish one on the Head River route. We were taking a big bus out there, and that's 50 miles out there, 50 miles back, every single, twice a day for, you know, 15, 20 kids. That's typically what we pick up out there. And one of these buses, we put and designated for that route. So that's saving. And, you know, when you're driving on 157, the lane's about this wide, you know? And to drive a bus out there, the smaller bus, it's so much safer and easier and much more economical. So as you see, out of our field trips this year, an athletic trip with smaller groups traveling, 20, a little more than 20% of those have been able to be utilized, one of those smaller buses. And that's a substantial, from my view, it's a substantial savings and a lot safer and easier for the drivers to drive, safer for them to ride, and because they, they can drive them so much easier. Another thing with these buses, these new buses, is the next bullet point, is every one of these buses are equipped with what's called engine brakes. It's commonly called Jake brakes, you've heard of Jake brakes? They're equipped with those, which, and these buses all go up and down the mountains, all the new buses. We've assigned them to the mountains because they have these engine brakes, which keeps them slower coming down the mountain, less wear and tear on the brakes, less wear and tear on the entire, you know, front end. And so it really makes a difference. It's saving on brakes, it's saving on fuel, it's, it really is safe because it keeps that, that from just constantly having to hit your brakes, it can slow it down, especially when you have a busload of kids and our students on there, and it's just very, very safe. So with safety in mind, also, we have monthly drivers meetings, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. One good thing that's taken place in Bill Banks and in Chris and these guys are helping us with online, work tickets online with the field trips, just, it's really, really good. And it's kind of expedited in keeping things going very well. And we purchased last year a new diagnostic machine, a professional diagnostic machine. These are huge because they can plug them in and almost instantly, you know, used to the old way, we had to dig and try and find what's going on and, you know, trial and error. But with these, these diagnostic machines, the way they're now, you plug them in and they pretty much tell you, right, what's going on, which saves time. And it gets the problem solved quicker and more efficiently, and you don't replace three parts and go, oh, that wasn't it. So it's really been a blessing and a help to us having that machine. And finally, on the last page, I mentioned our monthly driver professional training. I've also given you, I just want you to see, I gave you a packet of just the last two or three months. I, I just wanted you to see, this training is not just playtime. We keep our drivers trained, they're trained in, in all kinds of areas, but it's very specific and very focused to keep them on the cutting edge and keep them sharp and keep them knowledgeable, and so that they're doing the best job they possibly can. I just wanted you to see that some of the things that they're going through, you know, it's, it is serious stuff, and it's keeping them on the cutting edge and keeping them the best we possibly can be. So you can see the, the safety, and again, it all goes back to student safety. The best trained and equipped drivers are going to be the safest drivers, and it's paying off because we've had three years of accident-free driving. Two other quick things I'll mention, then I'll be done. Last month, we got our annual state inspection by the DPS. The officers come in once a year and inspect all of our buses. And this is really huge because if they find anything wrong on them, they red-tag them, you can't drive them. And that's really a big deal. So we, we do our best, our mechanics and shop guys do their best to keep the things in tip-top shape. But you always take like the last two days, they were scheduled to come in on a Wednesday, and you take those last couple of days and you make sure that everything is perfect, you know? It's kind of like, you know, the superintendent's going to come visit, you know? So make sure everybody, you know, we're all on our best behavior. And so we do that the last two days. Well, this year, the guys from, you know, and they come in with officers, uniforms and guns, they're very professional, they're very intimidated, you know, they come in to check these buses out. Well, this year, they made a mistake and showed up on Monday two days early. And I go on the lot that morning and I saw them, and I almost lost my salvation on that, you know? Oh my gosh. And I said, what are you doing here? You know, anyway, long story short, the good part of this is, is our guys have done, our mechanic, our shop guys have done such an awesome job that every one of these buses passed with flying colors. We had no problems, no red tags, no anything. And I want to commend these guys, those shop guys, they do just an outstanding job, and they all passed the inspection. And last thing is, last week, we conducted our spring evacuation drills. Each year, we are, we are required by the state to conduct practice evacuation drills to make sure that if there's ever an accident, these students are trained and they know how to quickly evacuate a bus. Because it's been proven many times over, if a bus catches on fire, it has three minutes before it's totally engulfed in smoke and flames. And so the time limit that they require is three minutes. Well, this year, we decided to do something I don't think we're supposed to have done to do it, but to do it this time, we did a backdoor evacuation, rear door evacuation, which is more arduous. Because all these kids have to go out the rear door. But the reality is, the front door, if it's a collision or something, may not be able to get out the front door. So they need to know how to safely evacuate from the rear door. But the problem is, is it takes longer, and you want to get this three-minute, when you've got 50 kids on a bus and you've got to get them all out the back door within three minutes and 100 feet away from your bus, but the driver there. So anyway, long story short, our drivers, you know, and they, they, we had a meeting last month, and they train their kids, they go over it to make sure they know how to do it, what to do it, and safely do it. And our drivers this year, the average, our average of all the buses, I averaged it all out today, was 1 minute and 58 seconds. That is tremendous. I mean, that was tremendous. So I just again want to commend our drivers and let you know, we have some awesome drivers and we're doing a very good job and a great transportation department. Okay?
Need more of it.
Yes, yes. Yes, we sure do. Any questions?
Great job, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I mean, what y'all do is tremendous, tremendous. But because anytime you have children, you can have behavior problems, and so not only are these folks driving, but they're also taking care of kids. Is behavior kind of management a part, I see the training here, I just can't see it in depth. Is, is behavior management a part of that?
Yes, our December meeting, we had Dr. Plumley come in from the middle school on student management, and she did a whole session on that. And yes, it is, and the closer we get to the end of school, the more it escalates because there are more, the weather's good and they're, you know? So yes, it is, we do have a good system in place of policies, of how we do the write-ups and how we do student disciplines. But yes, there are, and, but our drivers do an excellent job of managing it. And a lot of them, they, they have a heart, they don't just go for the jugular the first time, you know? They have a heart for the kids, and they understand that many of these kids come from very difficult situations. And the things that are coming out of their mouths when they're first grade, you know they heard that somewhere. They didn't just come up with that kind of language and those kind of words and those kind of things, and they understand that. And so, yes, yes, they do, they are. It's more challenging, it's challenging for, you know, for guys like me who, who like, you know, I was raised by my dad, if I even, if I even thought it, I would get, you know, I'd get blistered, you know? And, but it's not that way anymore. But still, they balance it well with compassion. I have to say, they, they surprise me all the time. And, you know, one of the things our drivers do, and you'll hear it if you ever heard them on the radio, is they always, with the little kids, they always make sure that there's a parent there to receive the kid. If there's not, they call in and say, I, I don't see a parent here, and I'm concerned about this kid. They care, you know, and they care about them. And we try and train them, like with Dr. Plumley, in how to manage it in, in a way that shows compassion and not militaristic. And that you're going to get what you give, and if, you can't just bark orders at these kids, and if, they're not all just going to jump. So the training has been very good because it's come from very qualified people that, that know how to teach these things. But yes, it is, but here's the biggest thing. All right, I'll give you a little secret. These teachers, they, on, on Halloween and Christmas, they have all these parties, and they pump them full of sugar. And then they, they put them out on our bus and confine them out there with 60 kids who have been sugar pumped up, and they, now they say, sit down and be quiet. They have a hard time doing that, so, but anyway, so that's always, we always expect that at certain times of the year. But anyway, but yes, it's, it is, but the, the driver are doing that.
Joan, I have one other question. What buses are we using here, what types, other than?
They're all now internationals or purely international buses. Everything, we have no more Bluebirds, everything is international. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right. Next on the list is Dr. Clay Delong, Director of School and Training.
I just told John he was a tough act to follow. Good evening. I appreciate.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry. I didn't, I didn't see you.
Sorry.
You were waiting at me. Touch the screen. I am here to, this afternoon, to kind of bring you up to date on what is going on in school nutrition. I wish I had better news, but all indications are leading to that we will return to free and reduced applications next year. That the waivers did not get into the latest bill that was passed. And so we don't hold out much hope. And, and I say we, we have a professional organization of over 50,000 members. And they did their job of lobbying in Washington, and many, many letters were sent asking for the waivers to continue. And they were not included when the last bill was passed. And so, as I said, all indications right now are, is that we will have free and reduced applications. Many directors, like I am, are worrying about what's going to go on and what's going to happen because primarily, you know, our students in the past have had a free or reduced application. And for the first up to 30 days of the school year, they have been able to be on the, be at that status, whether free or reduced, based on their previous status. So the first 30 days, giving them time to get in a new application, was kind of set so that we didn't get a lot of charges. And right now, as far as we know, that's not going to happen because all of our students have had a free status, and we have nothing to base it on, can we base it on the previous year? The only students that will continue with that are some of our students who receive SNAP or TAN at home and what we call directly certified. And there's only about 400 of them in the district. And our free reduced is close to, prior to the pandemic and some things, was close to about 60%. So, you know, I estimate somewhere around 40% of kids who have previously been identified as free or reduced based on their home income won't have those benefits to start out school. So that leads me to kind of the next thing. Prices for meals will, in all business sense, will need to increase because food is going up, just like the food at home is. And we are seeing significant increases on a weekly basis. And so, you know, we are concerned about what's that going to look like at the beginning next year. Now, you know, we're looking at ways right now to, how can we help avoid some of that? Whether that is having some applications, opportunities to do applications now. But there will have to be another application for the school year. The applications run from July 1 to June 30. So any application that will be completed now would expire on July 1, and they would have to do another one for the following year. Sometimes it's not always understood, you know, I just filled out one, why am I having to fill out another one? But in this case, it might be helpful. And so Mr. Abel and myself have looked at that and talked about it a little bit. And we will have applications online, so that might be a way of parents being able to complete them. And that'll just be some details that he and I will talk about a little bit more, maybe after y'all have had an opportunity to discuss that on. So what we also want to stress is the fact that free and reduced applications don't just affect students' meal status. And it's been a very true example of that over the last year because of Title I and E-RAY. And AP waivers for students taking AP exams, ACT and SAT fee waivers. And none of those really came through this year for a lot of students. And so those free and reduced applications serve more than just the purpose of providing meals at no or low cost for students. So this is a, a, a big concern and something that we're going to have to address before school gets out. And also look at increasing the prices of meals. So, you know, parents will need to be ready to prepare, be prepared to pay for meals starting when the school starts. They don't have an application on file for certain. Our supply chain continues to be an issue. You're hearing things on TV now about this not being available or the pricing of this going up. Well, that's been occurring with us for the last year. It is a weekly occurrence to have price increases. Even though we have bids, they put in force, they're force majeure. And so therefore, bid prices really don't mean anything. We have problems getting beef and chicken and cereal and canned fruit. It's on a regular weekly basis. But despite this, we have been able to stay close to our menu. We might say it's chicken tenders and we have chicken nuggets, some form or another. We have tried to add a few things recently. We celebrated Banana Day, had banana pudding, so that was kind of a fun little day. And then, of course, Friday, what would birthday be without some wormy dirt cake? So we had that awesome. So we're trying to sprinkle a few of those things in, but I know we, it took us a couple of months in order to get the worms to the wormy dirt cake. So we have supply chain issues on some of it. But primarily, I think we all need to get prepared for any reduced applications that want to be completed. The sooner the better, the quicker the better. And be prepared for next year and eliminate some of the charges that are going to hurt. Any questions?
Just to reiterate, that's not a local decision, that's not a Department of Education decision, that's the USDA.
USDA determines all of that, and we have no control over any of that. And that's an excellent point. So the only thing the board determines is what the cost is. We have to approve that, and of course, you know, that's kind of based on what, the current cost is occurring right. And of course, you know, that's kind of based on what the current cost is occurring right now because the school nutrition program is a self-sufficient program. And in order to beat that, we have to reduce costs. But we do encourage parents to get free reduced applications completed in the timely manner. And sorry, the news is not better. I would rather be standing up here saying, hey, it's going to continue, but it's not. But these little applications need to be completed not only for us, but several of our other partners. Any questions?
Do we have ways to get that word out? Because that seems like a really important part up along is getting them to complete those applications, not only for their children, their own children and their family's benefit, but also it's good for the district to have these. So is there a way to get the word out?
Well, at the beginning of every school year, they are distributed. Every child gets one at home. The, I think it's, you can think about this as a gap. There's a gap in what the benefits were and what the benefits will be when school starts. And when those applications come in, of course, there's only the director and the school nutrition bookkeeper that approve those applications. And of course, you know, there's just so many that you can do in a timely manner. And so it takes sometimes, you know, days in order for us to get those approved. And so even though some parents send it in today, we may not be able to get to it today because we may have two hundred other ones that came in the day before. So getting them that way. Doing them online is one of the best ways. And they do that by establishing a parent account, not a student account. They have to go into a parent account in order to do, to fill out an application online. And it's secure. Nobody else sees it. It walks them through the steps of doing that. But they have to do it through a parent account. We can't approve them if they go into their child account and then complete one. So online is one of the fastest ways. They can also fill out one for the entire family. They don't have to fill out one for each child. And that's helpful too, because that's less to have to complete. And online, it's the same way. But yes, this is, I think it's the gap that we're worrying so much about because of running up, you know, the charges. And, you know, if meals are three dollars a day, you're talking about fifteen dollars a day, a week for, you know, one child. And if you've got more than that, it could be costly. We need all the help we can get. And we'll use social media and those kind of things to help encourage parents. But they've got to go home. Students have got to give it to their parents. They've got to get it back. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Next, we have Chris Green, Director of Information Technology and Network Services.
Can follow me up on exactly what she was talking about. Today, we've got our E-Rate. I wouldn't even talk about E-Rate today, but we've got our E-Rate awards. We applied for five things and we're approved for all five. So we've got all five. That's the land management, the ten gig internet from TBN, our intake server room redo, all the wiring routing, doing new cabinets, monitoring equipment. And then the new switches needed around the county in case we have a breakdown or failure to replace them or we have too many connections in a couple of areas. So just really briefly. But I guess the big thing is our E-Rate funding is at eighty percent currently. That's not, it doesn't match the free and reduced numbers, but it's based on that. So if our numbers drop off, our funding rate will drop down as well. So just for a just dollar figure, this year, the E-Rate projects we applied for, hundred nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and eleven cents, of which E-Rate will pay for eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Our portion will be between one thousand, nine twenty-eight, sixty-two. So it's a tremendous help to us to be able to do that. So people getting in those applications and to help themselves by getting free reduced if they need it is just going to be huge. Because we've had this lapse where that hasn't been a thing. And so they're not conditioned to need to bring that back. So I, we definitely need a campaign to information to let everyone know this is coming and, you know, what they need to do to take care of it. But anyway, so E-Rate, it was a positive note, but it was coming off of a note that's going to be a tough struggle to get, you know, get accurate information in because there's just a stigma about turning these in for a lot of kids and things like that. So, but anyway, so, so that was the, I wouldn't even talk about E-Rate tonight, but I just, we just got those awards today. So I just threw that out there. That's just, all that's in there are in there is documents if you want to look through them. And I could talk about it in the future. A great link. My primary thing tonight was to talk about Network Management Services. That's the thing we have. We're basically, it manages our backup, recovery, ransomware, spyware, antivirus, and then any tech troubleshooting, switch configurations and that stuff. And my goal was to put it out to bids so we could get a better, improved price or, you know, at least try to get, put it out there for more people. We were extremely limited, as I'd said before, because we have that thirty minute on the ground response time in the system if something's going wrong. If anybody that works here knows, if things go out for a few minutes, we're in crisis mode. We're just rolling on as fast as we can. So if it's beyond us, we need that help at any point in time. So we only received two fully qualified bids, one from MCA, Mike Collins Associates, the company that we're currently with. The thing we added to this is because of all of the phishing stuff that people are doing with emails and trying to steal information, we've added a phishing simulation and training element into Network Management Services so that people basically will have some tests, phishing emails going out where people respond to, I think this is a phishing email. Just makes them a little bit more sensitive to what they're opening on their end. And also we'll have some training at the beginning of the year to make people aware of what to look for for these types of scams and things that could cause them personal trouble with their information or cause them to get things like spyware and ransomware. So that was added. The MCA bid, I mean, their MCA bid actually went up like fairly significantly, almost nine thousand dollars it went up. That's the only component that was added there. The bid also specified no new equipment would be required that we'd have to purchase. We continue to use the same things. So we have a seamless transition if we were to have a transition. The other company, which was Invicta Partners, also based out of Nashville, Chattanooga, they came in over twenty thousand dollars less than the MCA did. They are low bid. I've spoken with several of the people that use their services. Couple of their reviews are included in some of the stuff that's on there, one of which is from like Bradley Healthcare. So they're doing this extremely sensitive HIPAA stuff to deal with some privacy concerns like that. The other's largest, one of the largest private schools in Tennessee, Pope John Paul II. Some of both of them, they give glowing reviews for the services that this company is doing. So.
And twenty thousand left.
And twenty thousand dollars to you. So if this wasn't a close monetary decision, but I would make certain that these, that everyone that uses the services that we will be using, because we've used this company before for other things, but we've not used them for this. But everyone that is using their services speaks extremely highly of them. So they're very good.
Response time is good?
Yes. They've got, they have a person that actually lives in county that's a senior engineer. So on their way to work, everyone, they're on their way by here and their office is in Chattanooga hardly than three minutes. So same deal. They're, they're ready to go on our response times. Thanks. They've met every criteria. Our transition, so in that, I will obviously be recommending lowest fully qualified bid. And with those reviews, there's, I definitely have to do that. So I'll be, I'm recommending that we go with Invicta Partners on this one. And it's, we also have extensive, we've worked with them extensively in other things. If you remember our ECF Chromebook bid, we got sixteen hundred Chromebooks. They're using that grant. We got those through Invicta. They were one of those. And so we basically, we've worked with them in several aspects before, but not in this capacity. But everyone we've spoken with, they do it with extremely confident. The only other thing that's different about their bid is the thing that does our local backup is called Datto. It's on, it's a very level Cirrus III, which means nothing other than it reaches the end of life like everything else in about a year and a half when it might have to be replaced. MCA didn't address that. Invicta said, let's go ahead and get your Cirrus five included in the cost, no extra cost. And it will be good for like six to seven of them. So the only thing that Invicta we will have is we will have a one-time, two thousand dollar setup fee, which will involve our changeover when they go through. Because every, that would work with MCA to remove their agents, add our changeover passwords. Should be no downtime. But it's like, that's, that's the only thing that's sort of an outlier of their bid. But even with that, it would be far below. And that's one time, not every year. This is the yearly cost that you're subject to. But anyway.
And the contract is one year?
One year at a time. Yep. And at that point in time, we can change again or we can basically have, at the beginning of the contract, we actually have a chance to leave it if we're not happy. So we can basically, can always go back to what we're using now or move forward with the new partner. But anyway, it was a, it's a, I feel really good about both groups. And like I said, the review, I've never gotten a series of reviews that I think were that high across the board. I included those two just because they came from a privacy area and a school full network area. Their network's about as large as ours, even though they're a like private school, a little smaller student number, but it is an extensive network. So.
Any questions? Thank you. Thanks, sir. All right. That concludes everything under the department report.
You went into recognition stakeholders.
All right. Under recognition of stakeholders, as you know, on April the fifth, we had a career fair at Dave County High School. I think I've told you that in the fall, we have a college pro fair. This past spring, it was our first annual career fair. And after the event was over, we surveyed some of the employers that were on campus. And we also surveyed our, some of our kids. Some of the feedback that we received from some of the employers, one quote was, "Thank you for the opportunity to be there. Looking forward to maybe employing some of the wonderful students we met." And that's from Jason Walden with Vanguard National Trailer. A gentleman from Jake Marshall Service says, "Waiting to hear from your students to see if they have any interest in HVAC." And Ms. Gatlin has followed up on that, looking into checking, asking some of the seniors if they're interested in going into the HVAC industry. Some of our students, Stella Henry, the career fair at DCHS opened my eyes to many different jobs and possible career paths available here in my community. The career fair at DCHS was very informative and provided many students with a broader outlook on the career opportunities here in Dave County. So it was very positive feedback. It's a great experience for the kids. But also have to give a shout out to the thirty-plus employers or community agencies that were on campus on April the fifth. Talking about character strong, just a moment, we had several, we had a big event this past Friday at New Salem, at the New Salem Community Center. It was our Dave Games for, that's kind of like our local, local Special Olympics, if you will. It was a great turnout. One of the, one of the little girls looked at me and said, "I want to race you." And so I actually raced two of the girls and I got beat. So I didn't even, I didn't even make it on the leaderboard. I also want to extend a special thanks to Miss Cynthia and Sheena Hill. We got, I got word that on Thursday, our, we always give the kids medals after they compete in the events. And our medals were in New York. So Cynthia drove over to Dalton and found some medals. And then Sheena printed our logo in Dave Games here at the middle school. So I think we found, I think we found a, we can just send those other medals back to New York. And we'll just start doing this. The logo was great. But it was a great event for the kids. We had, oh my goodness, the police escort going up Lookout Mountain. If there were any significant calls here in the county, all the officers were escorting us up Lookout Mountain. It was, it was great. It was a blast. It was a beautiful day. The weather was good, bright sun. And after the kids competing in the events, they, they got to have a hamburger and hot dog and then bounce on the, in the bounce houses there at the, at the community center. This was a wonderful event. Also, we had the prom this past Saturday at Coal City Block. Historically, the prom has been held in and around the Chattanooga area. But this year, it was nice to be able to host, have a prom here locally and get back to local business here. It was a beautiful setting. It's the first time I've ever been to Coal City Block. But beautiful, the weather was good, great DJ, kids looked great. You know, guys, it's easy to kind of, you know, you see them, you all would, you know, recognize them. But some of the girls walk by and they, they look at you and say, aren't you going to say hello? I'm like, it took me a minute to figure out who you are. But they, they clean up well. But it was a, it was a great event. And it kept the night off with a, with a fireworks show. Scrolling on down, the, on Friday evening, Davis Elementary held an art show and painting with parents. And they repainted the mural in the Be Good Cafe to align with their PBIS initiative, where be safe, be organized, and be accountable. And kids that practice those things, they get to, have lunch on Fridays in the Be Good Cafe. So it was a great event at Davis Elementary. Character Spotlight at Dave Elementary. We have Ms. Dawn Pascal on the left. She is a second grade teacher. And then Jaden Powell at the top and Samuel Candies there at the bottom. So shout out to the Dave Elementary Character Strong. We also had some, the students at Dave Elementary participated in the Optimist Club essay contest. We have each of these students placed at the local level. We have Hazel Grace Taylor, Emerson Phillips, Olivia Bruce in Braxton, Cameron. They're all featured there with Principal Tracy Blavens. At Dave County High School, we have Alex Dyer and Chase Mayo that participated in the Aurora Literary Contest that was sponsored by Ms. Molly Roger. And Alex took top honors in the essay division. And Chase, he took top honors in the poetry division. And that pretty much sums everything up. It's a busy time of the year. We start end of grade testing at elementary school and middle school this week. So next item on the agenda is Dave County Public Library, Ms. Mandy Payworth. She has a guest with her and she's here to talk about the library play, card program.
I'm going to try my best. I've not done, I've done Google Slides before, but I've never done PowerPoint. We'll see how it works. It's just the forward button. Okay. First, I want to thank you all for having me and being able to talk about what's going on at the library. It's really important to us that we get to share that with you. Each of you has one of these reports. It's an impact report from 2021. On this report, you'll see some really important numbers there that talk about how many Dave County school students utilize some of our services at the library. On that number that accounts right there. Almost twenty-five thousand children and young adult print book circulation. Circulation means that they're being checked out. That's how many books in 2021 are being checked out by. That's how many books in 2021 are being checked out by children and young adults. The other thing that's super important to look at is the ready-to-read, if there were, it says the future students. This talks about the ready-to-read program from, up through 2021. I started right at the end of 2021, 2021. And I can say that our numbers for that ready-to-read program have just expanded since I've been there, and we brought on Spencer. We sometimes, we're averaging between 15 and 35 preschoolers coming to our storytime every week. So that's just a really exciting thing to get, to be getting our preschoolers ready to enter kindergarten, or preschool and, pre-K and kindergarten. We've been hosting several kids programs, increased them again, still, as Spencer's been there. In April, he was really excited to announce, or to have, there's been one program every week for every age group. So that was a lot of programming we've had at the library, and that's been really exciting. Over there, where it says Collection Spotlight, I visited the middle school to try to get, gear up some interest in having students sign up for library cards. And we talked a lot about Libby, the audiobook, the free audiobook service that you can have with a library card. So I went and met with pretty much all of the seventh grade ELA students, and we had a great time sharing some of the resources that they had, that they could have if they had library cards. I'm going to get to the play card at the end, but one thing that we certainly noticed was when we said, when I was ready to sign these kids up for the Libby audiobook that I purchased, they were all, they were all reading The Hobbit, that was their new class novel. So I purchased 100 synchronous usage of The Hobbit, so that every student at Dade Middle could listen to the audiobook while they were reading along. Two kids raised their hand that they had library cards in one of the classes. And, you know, that's one of the things, that's one of the barriers we want to break down with the play card. So that's a little picture of you presenting there. And we also launched our Chromebook hotspot checkout program at the library this past month. And so far, we've had a few patrons come. We had one family with Dade County Elementary School students that were spring break. They checked, they were going camping. They checked out two Chromebooks and two hotspots so they could stay online and active and be doing things while they were at their campsite in Florida. So that was exciting. All righty. The other thing that I'm super excited about, the month of... It's not working. Okay. We had our school visits for April. Pretty much every week in April, we've had a school visit from Dade County Public Schools. The 1st of April to the 8th of April, we had students from Dade Middle and Dade High, the special needs class, come and visit the library. They did a library tour. They got, we read a story, they got to go behind the scenes. It was really exciting and a lot of fun. On the 19th, we had 120 first graders come visit us at the library. It was quite a day. They came in groups of two classes each, so we had three sections of like 40 kids each come into the library. Again, we did storytime, they got a massive tour of the library, and we had a STEM craft that they could do, and we also had a Pokemon scavenger hunt. That was a lot of fun, and they loved that. And this Pokemon scavenger hunt is something that any kid that comes into the library, I guess it doesn't have to be a child, it could be anybody, they just get it, and it's got clues, and they walk around the library. And some of the clues are, "You'll find this book in junior nonfiction." So they kind of have to know what's going on in the library. One of the things we talked about on these school visits, is you can see that graphic on the right, Libby, E-Read Kids, and Learning Express Library, these are our digital resources that are so valuable to our public school kids. Libby is this audiobook, ebook, and magazine free resource where you can download those with your library card number. You have access to the Georgia Download Destination, which is thousands of titles for free. I also mentioned that we are looking at working with the schools and the English teachers to make sure we can purchase audiobook copies so that every student will have the opportunity to listen to the audiobook along with reading their class novel. E-Read Kids is fabulous. I don't know if anybody in the, when I was teaching in the school system, we used Epic, and it's basically ebook and audiobook that's all children's titles. Well, E-Read Kids is also free to any public library patron, and there's 30,000 titles that kids can use that are all children's books, and it's all free. So that's a really great resource for elementary and middle school students. The Learning Express Library, I know, I'm going to get to that too in my next slide, or one of my slides. This was our special needs class visit. I just took some pictures because we had so much fun. They were checking it. Well, we only had a few students with library cards. So those that had library cards were able to check out some books, and they were really excited about the DVDs that they could check out, the books they could check out, and all the different resources they had.
Let me see that remote.
Oh, okay. I thought I pushed it.
God, please, pump it.
Oh, okay. There we go, okay. And here's some of our first graders listening to Mr. Spencer. This was when they were about to listen to the story, and this was about when they were about to go on their scavenger hunt, and they were getting instructions. And I actually was at Guthrie's one day this week, and one of the students was like, "I know you from the public library." Sure enough, he was hanging out at Guthrie's, so we talked for a minute, and he was very excited about coming out and checking, checking out of it. Oh, that's him. He's the one in the, the green, the green zip-up with the orange zipper. That's on Guthrie's. So we were talking about the job fair. I know that you all mentioned the job fair. It was a huge success for the library. Spencer had a pop-up, our little pop-up library, and one of the things that he talked a lot about was the Learning Express Library, where you can do practice SATs, you can do practice electrician's exams, practice nursing school exams. It's an amazing resource. It also has extra practice for basically grades, fourth grade all the way through high school in content matter, all for free. So he was able to talk a lot about not only jobs within the library, and what it looks like to work in a library, but he was able to offer different avenues and paths for students to utilize resources at the library to find jobs. We, spring break at the library, so we had a lot of kids come visit us over spring break to check out books. And I snapped some pictures of the kids that came in over their spring break to check out books. They checked out movies. And the family on the right checked out our George Parks Pass. So we have passes that you could check out to Chattanooga, no, they checked out the Chattanooga Zoo Pass. And so they got to go to the Chattanooga Zoo for free. We have the Atlanta Zoo, we've got Georgia State Parks, we've got several of the museums around Atlanta that are all free with your library card. So we had a lot of fun over spring break. A lot of kids came to see us. And I also, yeah, the, the family, I didn't take a picture of them when they had their print books, because the kids didn't come in, the mom got them. So there's a few collaborations that I wanted to talk about also that I didn't make slides for, but that we've been working with the schools. One of them is, we partnered with Dade Family First to have the Child Abuse Awareness Art Contest at the library. So we have like the five pieces of artwork that you can vote on, your favorite, all hanging up at the library, and you can vote at the front. So we were really excited to put those, display those and put those out, and we've had a lot of folks coming and looking and choosing their favorite. It was an art project in the middle school, and we have a little blurb about what the students were prompted to, you know, to express through their artwork. So you can come by the library to see that. We also worked with the elementary schools and the middle school to try to drum up some interest in the Newberry Award winners. It was, it's 100th anniversary of the Newberry Award for children's literature, and basically all of the schools pulled all of the books in their collections from Newberry winners that they had, and we've been encouraging children, as well as adults. I've had a lot of adults walk by the Newberry books that we have out on display, and go, "I read that in seventh grade," or "I read that in sixth grade," and they check them out again. So that's been a really fun collaboration we've had with the schools. All right, the play card. This is why I'm here tonight. I'm really, really excited. We met with Mr. Engel and talked to him a little bit about this play card. Basically, the Georgia Play Card is a collaboration between Georgia Public Libraries and the public school systems. And what the play card would do was when students are enrolled in school, they will automatically get a play card, library card. It's a modified version of a regular library card that's based on a school code, and we were able to get DCS and the student ID number that they use in the lunchroom, or that they use to log, I guess, whatever they, their identifier for school. And they're allowed to check out five books. There's no fees associated, there's no late fees. You would, they would have to pay for the book if they lost the book, but there's no late fees on those five checkouts. And they would have access to all of the digital resources I spoke about. So this would make such a huge impact. For instance, when I went to the seventh grade classes, every student there would already have a library card. I could have got The Hobbit downloaded for them on that one trip, and they all would have had an audiobook version of The Hobbit that we had purchased. So we feel like this is going to remove so many barriers, and we're really excited about this collaboration, and we hope that you all can see the benefits of this program. There is an opt-out period, and every parent can opt out at any time if they don't want their child to have access to the library card. But it is an opt-out. So every child will be assigned a library card unless their parent chooses to opt them out. We met with the state representative for the library system and Bill Benson, and talked about the collaboration between getting the information. It's all very safe. We would only be taking a little bit of information, and there are more spreadsheets Abby than I am, but they talked about all the logistics, and he made sure that everything was, you know, adequate for safety of securing information of students. So there is a video. It's three and a half minutes. I hope you all will bear with me. Chelsea, our assistant director, made this video to give a really quick explanation of everything the play card can offer. So I'd love to share this now.
Welcome to the Play Student Library Card Program. Thanks to a partnership between Cherokee Regional Library and your local school system, your student can be the proud owner of a Pines Library Access for Youth, or PLAY card. This digital library card allows your student to access all our incredible online resources, as well as check out Pines free materials at our four library branch locations in Chickamauga, Lafayette, Rossville, and Trenton. There are so many benefits to the PLAY card, and it all begins at our website. By using their PLAY card, a student can access over 11 million items in the Pines catalog of books, DVDs, and audiobooks. Items not owned locally can be shipped to your home branch free of charge from other Pines libraries across the state. Through E-Read Kids and Libby, your student will have 24/7 access to over 20,000 ebooks and audiobook titles. Our digital library gives your student access to Explora, a trustworthy environment of articles and facts for research papers, class projects, or homework. With Learning Express Library, you can access tutoring resources for grades four through eight, or simulated practice exams for the ACT, SAT, AP exams, and more. To use your PLAY card online, simply log into any of our digital resources, like E-Read Kids shown here, by entering your three-digit school ID code in all caps, followed by your student ID number. Please note that your school ID code is specific to your school system. If a resource asks for a PIN number or a password, it will be the student's two-digit birth month and four-digit birth year. For example, if a student was born in June of 2012, their password would be 062012. In the library, the PLAY card will let students use our computers and check out up to five items at a time. The student will simply tell the staff member checking them out that they are a PLAY card member, and then provide their student ID number. There are no late fines associated with these items, and charges will be accrued if an item is lost or damaged. With their PLAY card, students can also check out Chromebooks and hotspots through our Access for All program, and family passes to a variety of parks and museums throughout Georgia. While you are in our library, make sure to check out our calendar of events. Our branch libraries host monthly programs for children, teens, and families, including STEM clubs, book clubs, and family crafting nights. Each summer, we host a summer reading consentant challenge for all ages. Prizes include books for your home library, and sometimes even tickets to local experiences. Before you leave, check out our parent resource center and makerspace areas. Our branch libraries have curated collections to inspire our next generation of coders, builders, and engineers. Students will have access to their PLAY card automatically unless a parent or guardian completes an opt-out form to remove their student from the program. To access the opt-out form, or to learn more about the many benefits of our PLAY card program, please visit the Cherokee Regional Library System's website at chrl.org and select PLAY card program from the top menu. We are so excited about the opportunities this partnership has to offer our local students. We can't wait to see you in the library.
Well, I hope that that gave you some good information on what the PLAY card is, what it can do. It is being rolled out on May 1st in both Walker and Chickamauga County school systems. So we're really excited and hoping that we can get Dade County rolled out and ready to go before summer reading, which would be great, because we have a, you know, reading over the summer is one of the best ways to not lose the information you learned over the school year. So we really want to make sure that all the students in Dade County can take advantage of the summer reading program. It's got some really cool prizes if they do the reading challenges each week. Last but not least, I have a few statements from some teachers that I've been working with and talking to, as well as one of our library board members and a parent of a Dade County High School student, Mr. Cap Everett. I'll read mine, and then I'd like Cap to come up and speak for just a second, and we'll be done. The first is from Molly Rogers, who we saw there with some of her English students. I met with Molly when I first started, and she was really excited about Libby and audiobooks. The biggest hurdle was that it was so hard to get kids' library cards, because they would have to bring their parents in, and everybody just finds something else to do. So this is Molly's statement that she sent when I asked her to comment on what, how, how she thought PLAY cards would, you know, help the students that she teaches. Reflecting on this challenging and at times depleting school year, I realize that implementing an independent reading program in my classroom has been the best thing I've done all year. Students begin class by reading a book of their choosing for 10 minutes. I assess their comprehension and completion of the book by simply talking to them about it. This two-to-life reading assignment that is both standards-based and research-backed has strengthened the classroom community of avid book lovers through shared book recommendations and discussions, as well as sparked a love, or at the very least, a pleasantly surprising tolerance of reading in my most reluctant and struggling waiters. I've seen gains across all ELA standards as a result. Next year, we're going to expand our independent reading program to all courses and grade levels in our department. An inspired love of reading that is so well-nourished at the elementary school level somehow dies by the time students reach high school. Free access to engaging, high-interest materials at the high school level would be a huge victory in the fight against the redecide. The PLAY card program will not only accomplish that, but also support student learning by enabling students to access ebooks and audiobooks at home for works of literature we are reading in class or signing for summer reading. I'm so excited by the equitable possibilities that the PLAY card program represents for my students at the high school level and for all of the children of Dade County. As a former ELA teacher myself, I also remember having access to ebooks and audiobooks during my 50, I had 10 to 15 minutes of independent reading every day when students came into my class as well. If they forgot their book, which many times they do, they could always get on their Chromebook and have their ebook or audiobook, that they could then spend their, spend their time valuable, valuable, I could be my own, listening to or reading a book that they already had downloaded. And I have another statement from Mr. Matt Deli. He's the, the English teacher that I talked to at the middle school, whose class was reading The Hobbit, and he was really excited about having access to the audiobook. And Matt said, "The Georgia PLAY card initiative is an absolute game changer for our classrooms. Providing students with free access to myriad digital and audiobooks will be an immediate and much-needed update to classroom libraries. Every iota of educational and brain research demands that students read to improve their reading. A key component to this reading is finding books that kids want to read. Finding such titles necessitates access, and the Georgia PLAY card is a lifeline for teachers and students, enhancing classroom libraries beyond belief. This is a no-brainer for our kiddos. Dismissing the PLAY card initiative would be an educational travesty. Please do not pass on this opportunity to give our kids the gift of unfettered reading." And as we said, because we're a member of the Georgia Pines system, we have access to over 11 million books that kids can find. And if we don't have it in our branch in Trenton, we can get it shipped to Trenton for them. You just put it on hold, and the library ships it, and you can come pick it up, and we let you know. Now I'm going to let Mr. Cap Everett come and also mention something about the PLAY card.
Hey, thanks for listening to me. I'm going to share my experience with my son, Micah. And this doesn't have to do with... And this doesn't have to do necessarily with the Play Card specifically, because this was before the Play Card stuff happened. But it has to do with... He had a library card. He didn't know about Libby, which is the app that you get. You can install, and you can install it on your phone. You can install it on... And he has installed it on his phone, his computer. And I also just tested a Chromebook, so I know that it works on all of those. So I'm a big fan of audiobooks. I have a hard time just opening a large book and feeling motivated to read the large book. So I feel like this audiobook, the audiobook area of Libby has the potential for getting kids over the hump of just starting a book. And then when they get unmotivated, maybe, to continue reading the book, they can listen to the book. And I listen to lots of books just to inform work. So this is about Micah, though. So I'm a father of... Listen, I have three kids that have gone through, and I have one that's on the way. And Micah's graduating this year from Dade County. So a few years ago, I'll just read this so I don't wrangle too much here. A few years ago, he had some books to read for class, and he was struggling to read them. I told him about the audiobook function of Libby, and then I was able to, through his library card, get him onto Libby. He checked out one of the books that he had for his class. And I remember Micah using this app in two ways. So the first one is how you'd expect. You just listen on, you're listening. He's probably cleaning his room, doing dishes, like the good son he is. And then the other way is one that you wouldn't expect, and this is one that I'm kind of addicted to. You can turn up the app speed in terms of the speed in which it, in which the speaker, the narrator reads. And then you can read at the same time. So like, I feel like I'm one of the slowest readers in the world. And you can put a book there, go on to two times reading speed, and it, the comprehension, everything about it, to me, works well. So I think this is really going to benefit the kids in addition to Micah. So the... I asked him if he thought it helped his reading comprehension, and he said, "Yeah." And then when he was testing, I was, he was right. That shit, that bear with us, his test score. And so after this, I decided to try to look for other books that were on the syllabus, and they, most of them weren't there. And so I feel like there's three... I just kind of wrote this out. There's three points of friction in this. One, are barriers to overcome. One is the library card, and that's what the Play Card program overcomes, basically. The second is getting the app installed. So you have to, you go onto your phone through the Apple, or the store, and/or your Google, you know, if you have an Android app. Or if you've got a Chromebook, the same Android app. And you've got to install it. And, but it's really easy if kids don't have to install all sorts of stuff. Probably better than I do. And then once you have that, you have the barrier, the third barrier. So the first one is the library cards, which we're overcoming. The second is getting the app installed. And then the third is, are the books available? And so I feel like the more the collaboration that we can have between the public library and the systems, school systems, so it's not just Dade, it's Walker, and across, the greater the likelihood that we'll be able to get these books queued up if it's possible to queue them up, and so they're ready to go. So whenever it's time, "Oh, we've got this book." Well, hey, we actually, we've got an audio version of this for free. So I just wanted to express to the board my appreciation for pursuing this public library, this with the public library. And I really do think it'll be a great service to benefit our kids. And I think, I know that there's a lot of other resources besides the audiobook thing, but I'm kind of biased really about the audiobook thing. So I think just with that alone, it's going to really benefit the kids. And I know it's got a lot more to offer, but thanks for your time. Thank you.
I also attached for all of y'all, there's a list of FAQs for the Play Card. You've got the memorandum of agreement or understanding and to look over as well.
And just to kind of go back and connect with Dr. Long, so the library could also be a good place to come and fill out that application for free and reduced, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, anything online, we have computer, free computer use. You know, you don't even have to have a library card to use our computers. But every time someone comes in, and it's the third time they're getting a guest pass, I'm like, "Don't you want to go ahead and get a library card? Like, how much does it cost?" I said, "Nothing, it's free." They're like, "Oh, sure." So I've signed up a lot of folks that way, who've come in just to utilize their computers.
And to make that connection, if you don't have access or don't want to use access at home, you could come to the library and fill out that free and reduced form and get it in quickly.
Yes. And one of the things we're committed to, in addition to purchasing titles that the schools give us of books that they are using for their required reading. And not all books are available in the 100 secret usage. It depends on the publisher. So we would look at what each grade level was requiring, and we would do our best to make sure at least one for each grade level during the semester or during the year would be available as an audiobook. And I'm also committed to going into the schools and saying, "Let's get this downloaded on the Chromebooks," and helping get, you know, the kids that want to utilize that, getting it on the Chromebooks, helping them get it on their phones. It's a really quick and easy process once somebody's walking you through those steps. And I'm about to ask if there were any questions. I talked really fast, but I was trying not to take too much time.
Cover your log.
I did, I know. I actually left things off of my list, too. Believe it or not. All right, well, thanks again for allowing us this time. And, you know, we are really excited about the partnership. So if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me, or at least you, Bax, or Director. Thank you.
All right, the next item under the Superintendent Report is the ARP, American Recovery Plan, and ESIR, returns in-person learning review every six months. That's what we refer to as CARES3. The American Recovery Plan, that act requires that we publish our plan, post it online, and take public comment. It's been on the website for the last two weeks. It was made available for the public today. We have no public reviews, or we receive no public feedback. But it just kind of outlines what our plan is and the use of the PINEs.
Uh-huh. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Discussion. First is monthly financial general fund reports.
Okay, the first thing we'll be looking at this afternoon is their SPOS 5 and 6 financial for the month of May, I mean, for the month of March 2022. And as you can see, we're at 75% of the fiscal year being complete. And in the first section is SPOS 5. Their ending balance for the previous month was $3,101,021.90. The interest for the month of March was $363.24. And we received a reimbursement refund on a return item that someone had ordered, and that was an amount of $551.67. And the issued checks in the SPOS 5 account for the month of March was $110,392.64. And that leaves their ending balance in SPOS 5 for March 2022 And if you look down on the next section, that is blue, that is their SPOS 6 account, and their ending balance for March was $273,271.64. Interest for the month of March was $11.97. The sales tax distribution for the month of March that we received from the partner revenue was $266,020.19. Leaving their ending balance in SPOS 6 for March 2022 at $539,303.80. And the total for SPOS 5 and 6 for March 2022 If you look at the last thing in the blue is SPOS comparison from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 22. In fiscal year 20, our collections for March was $197,417.81. For fiscal year 21, March was $210,128.74. And y'all really like the fiscal year 22? It is $266,020.19. So we collected $55,891.45 more than we have for this one. On the next page is our general fund financial for the month of March. And once again, if you look up, we're at 75% of the fiscal year being complete. Our learning taxes collection for March 2022 was $129,561.61. For March 2021, it was $163,476.09. Collections were down by $33,975.48. And the next line is our TAV tax. For March 22, we collected $88,935.93. And for March 2021, we collected $103,50.41. We're down in both of those areas. But if you look down in the next section that I have highlighted gray, that second column, the total general fund revenue through March, we're at 81.62% collecting their revenue, where we're only at 75% of the fiscal year being complete. So we've got a lot of this money upfront. It's fine, the difference is for the month of March, I believe. The next section is our expenditures for the month of March. And our total expenditures was, for a year from July 1 to present, was $14,178,619.28. And if you'll look in the last, next to the last column, we're at 75.47% on our expenditures. So we're just slightly over on the expenditures. And the last column on the right is the open POs for the month of March, that totaled $33,335.24. The last section, our ending balance for July 1, 2021, was $4,405,463.94. Our total collections for revenue through March is $16,120,696.14. Total expenditures through March 2022 is $14,178,619.28, leaving our ending balance in the general fund account at $6,347,548. And on the last page tonight is our construction in progress, and that's at the Dade Middle School. As you can see, we have written six checks. The original contract was $677,000. We had the one change order, leaving our total in this project at $700,901.74. Current balance remaining is $429,529.22. Are there any questions?
I got this one from curiosity. When you mentioned that SPOS 5 and 6, interest, what percentage will it have paid on that?
I'll have to look on my bank statement.
Three quarters of a percent of that?
Yeah, it's very little, very little.
Better than that, isn't it?
No, it's bad, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
We could invest it, and we've checked on that, and it wasn't a whole lot more. We haven't checked on it in a couple of months, but it wasn't a whole lot more. Like on the SPOS 6 now, the one that we just started, we won't use any of that money until we've been spending all of the SPOS 5. So I could...
Should we build up?
Yes, sir. I could call and ask them, ask Shannon again, you know, what we could get.
And invest them as a monetary.
Yeah, we've done it before, yeah.
We did that in a meeting years ago. Of course, Danny, it was significant. It was really...
What you had to be careful to when you have a project going on, you've got to make sure you have enough money in your checking account, or you get penalized, you know, when you pull it out, penalized.
We got lucky, got it on the monitor.
But we can call and check on that if y'all need to.
Wouldn't hurt to see, wouldn't hurt to know?
Yeah, we'll call tomorrow and find out.
Next is the Network Managed Services.
I recommend the board approve the warning to network managed service bid to invict up partners in the amount of $46,000. Board of...
Any questions? Okay, next item is MOU, Dade County Public Library.
I recommend the board approve the memorandum of understanding to the Dade County Public Library for the Play, Play Card, for the student program. Corey has reviewed the MOU and blessed it as well.
Any questions on that? Okay, next is approval of board policies, JBCB and JBC.
I recommend that the two following policies be laid on the table for 30 days. I'm recommending that we remove policy JBCB, which essentially needs to become a procedure to make policy JBC work. JBCB is not a required policy, and the information contained in it is more of a procedure. Essentially, we have two policies saying the same thing. Policy JBC contains a lot more information, but JBCB will certainly help execute board policy JBC.
Another way on this topic.
Yes.
Are there any questions on that? Okay. Next is approval of application to be in process of being an exemplary board for FY22.
The Dade County Board of Education is recognized as an exemplary board by the Georgia School Boards Association. GSBA developed this program to enforce the state's standards, which offers school boards additional ways to increase their effectiveness. The State Board of Education developed the state's standards for governance that form the foundation for GSBA's program. The board must complete the entire process as established by GSBA. The Dade County Board of Education must complete the required criteria in the following areas: strategic planning, Georgia vision project, governance team self-assessment, exemplary committee self-assessment, superintendent evaluation, local board of education training requirements, accreditation from CAGIA, board member ethics, including conflict of interest and fiscal responsibility. Therefore, I recommend the board approve to begin the application process of becoming an exemplary board.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, if not, moving on to one-time employee supplement approved by the governor.
The governor and the legislative body for the state of Georgia approved a one-time supplement for employees to be paid this fiscal year. That was in the governor's amended budget. Therefore, I recommend the board approve this supplement for all Dade County employees. And for employees that were not part of the governor's budget, we can use other revenue sources to supplement that, with the majority of it coming from ESIR or CARES3.
So are there any questions on that? Okay. Okay, next is diesel fuel bid.
I recommend the board approve this, Diesel Fuel Act 415 per gallon from Jet Ford. It's down a bit, isn't it?
A little bit.
Compared, over.
It was 459 last time. I'm ready to see the 249. Especially with as many miles as John had this. And it was amazing, it was a great report by the man.
Okay, next is transportation, apartment surplus.
I recommend the board approve a surplus of a 2004 International Mighty Passenger School Bus. You see the VIN number and the tag number there. And in addition to this, I would also like to recommend the board approve donating this bus to the Trenton Fire Department for, to be used for evacuation training. The motor in the bus is cracked, it's got a cracked block. And so the Trenton Fire Department had, we've communicated with the fire department, and it'll be up to them to have it, you know, worth its revenue from our capital asset. They will be responsible for having it towed.
How much money are you breathing in on the governor's thing?
The bills.
Yeah, the bills.
John and I had a conversation about that, really, five hundred, six hundred dollars.
Little bomb motor.
But the amount, it's going to cost somebody the tow bill just to get it off of our campus. It would be rather steep.
It would bring about the scrap.
And how will the fire department use it in the emergency?
Evacuation, yeah. Training.
So it's, you're going to safety considerations.
And we've donated another bus, or the district has donated a bus to the county before. They have a local command center. This was used in the tomatoes. It's basically a local 911 center. That was obviously running at the time, and it still runs. But this bus is just sitting on our lot, unusable.
Are there any other questions on that? If not, moving on to public input. Is there any public input?
No.
Next, we will move to the Consent Agenda Consideration. So if you would like, here are motions to approve item one, National General Fund Reports. Item two, Network Managed Services. Item three, MOU with Dade County Public Library Play Card. Item four, Report of Application to JBCB and JBC, lay on the table. Approval of application to begin the process of exemplary board FY22. Item six, One-Time Employee Supplement. Item seven, Diesel Fuel. And item A, Transportation Apartment Surplus.
That motion is approved.
Okay, you might hear a second. Give me a second.
Seven.
All in favor? That is everyone. Next item is executive session for personnel and property. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session?
My motion.
Give me a second. Okay, all in favor?